All right, everybody. Hi, Sean. It's 6:01. We have the three members of the Board of Selectment here. At this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order.
This conference will now be recorded.
As you can see, we are now being recorded. I would ask you, if you are not on the Board of Selectmen or running the meeting, please mute your microphone. It looks like most people have, so thank you for that. I'd like to start by asking everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, next up is approval of the agenda. You have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda that you have?
This is Kate. I don't have any.
I think I'm pretty good.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Sean. In favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the nine March minutes. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to take a look at those. Do we have any changes to those minutes?
No, they look pretty good to me.
Kate, all right, I concur. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as written, rather?
I'll make the motion to approve the March 9th meeting minutes as written.
Okay, thank you, Kate. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Selectmen's update. Give me just a minute here, because I don't know where I put it in my folder. Okay, I've got it. Selectmen's update. I'll give mine. I'd ask the other two selectmen to speak up on any of these that they want to talk about and also add anything they think is pertinent. Start with projects. Higginham Center, Hattam Elementary School. Unfortunately, the school that was interested in renting Hattam Elementary has withdrawn, the rental applicants withdrawn from negotiations. They've decided to put their expansion plans on hold because of the pandemic. They're waiting to see what the ultimate impact of it will be. Hopefully, they will still be interested in it when this clears up. However, we get anyone else interested in the meantime, we're certainly willing to go forward and discuss with any new tenants who might be interested. The other item in Higginham Center, Scoville Ho, the state DOT garage. We put out a request for bid proposal to environmental engineering consultants for a survey and assessment of environmental and engineering issues at the site. We received back bids from, or packets from four consultants. We are currently in the process. We've selected the top three. We're currently in the process of interviewing those three and should have a selection within a week. Tylerville Water Project continues as before. They've still are making connections. There are still some people resisting, but we've made progress in getting in touch with everybody and keeping this moving forward. Most of you know Dublin Bridge. The work has resumed on that. However, as they're working on it this time around, they are able to keep at least one lane of traffic open for the duration of the work they're doing. They will have to close, obviously, for two, maybe three days when they regrade and pave the road, final paving. But other than that, there will be at least one lane open, and in the evenings and early mornings before they're working, the entire roadway will be open for traffic. The other project information, roadwork. We have begun the season of roadwork in town. They have started with a contractor doing some drainage work on some of the roads in Hattam Neck. Paving will follow possibly as soon as the end of this week or early next week. It depends on the paving plant and availability. As far as roads on the west side of the river, Christian Hill will be the first one we're starting on. It'll be a continuation of the drainage work that the town started last year, and then we'll continue on with the other roads. Other items to talk about, and Joe, if I misspeak on the next one, please feel free to speak up, the budget. So I've said in a couple of announcements, the regional school district 17 budget has gone back to the school board. They are reconsidering it. They are looking for and have found a number of cuts to be made. They're still working on that. On the 15th of this month, which was last week, we had a joint meeting between the Boards of Selectmen, the Boards of Finance from both towns, with the Board of Education. It was just an initial meeting on a revisit of the budget process to talk about concerns, some things that may be done. Said they already had a list of proposed revisions they were looking at to their budget to reduce it, and they will continue to work on that. We're scheduled for another meeting with them, April 21st, again, to see how they're doing and also to let them know how we're progressing on our... Excuse me, March, May 21st, next month. All right, the town budget. At the last Board of Finance meeting, they approved the initial budget that was sent to them by the Board of Selectmen. There were some changes, but basically, the budget was approved. They did that with the thought that this budget will now be put on a shelf. And as we look at reworking the submission, I've already gone to the department heads, asked them to submit a new budget, see if they could find more cuts, even though I will say most of them had submitted a budget with cuts over the previous year already. So that's going on, and the Board of Finance is also going to look at other ways to offset any potential increases so that there is no tax increase. No guarantees on any of that. A lot of that depends on the school district budget, but that's the status right now of the budget. Joe, do you have anything quickly to add to that?
I think that's covered where we're at.
All right, thank you, Joe. A couple of other things to talk about. Obviously, the elephant in the town right now is the COVID-19 pandemic. It started announcements on that on the 27th of February. We currently have, as of this afternoon anyway, 16 confirmed positive tests in Hattam. Fortunately, we have not had any fatalities as of yet. The governor has issued, I think, 28, 29 executive orders as a result of the pandemic, covering a range of things from holding public meetings, allowing it to be done online like we're doing now, voting on budgets, tax deferments, which we'll talk about later in this meeting, and a number of other topics. In my announcements on our website, we've got a link to the executive orders if anyone wants more information that's already been put out. I would like to highlight a couple of things from my most recent announcement, the 420 announcement. There have been a couple of studies, one in Great Britain, one in South Korea, indicating that, the South Korean ones indicated people who had recovered from COVID-19 had been reinfected. That both of these studies are small groups. The validity is in question. But it is good, right now, it's the only information we have. Hopefully, that will change as they look into it more. The other study from Great Britain looked at immunity factors in people who had recovered from COVID-19, and their data so far indicates that those who are 40 years and under don't build up enough immunity from one exposure to protect them from a second. Again, that might be because they were looking at people who had mild cases, or it might be a testing flaw. It could be any number of things. But the reason I highlight them in my announcement and now is just to further reinforce to people we still have to be careful, even those of you who think you may have had or know you had and recovered from the COVID-19. The immunity is not guaranteed at this point. Other things, the town office building, as most of you know, is open by appointment only. Transfer station. Not surprisingly, this is the hottest topic I've been dealing with, with the changes to it. Tomorrow, the transfer station is open for bulk only if that goes smoothly, as the last few days of the transfer station have gone. This weekend will open up for all services as normal, household trash, bulk trash, from everybody. Next Wednesday, we'll reserve Wednesday morning for seniors, household garbage. And then the afternoon will be open to anybody, and it will be bulk waste accepted all day long. Afternoon from anybody, seniors and others will be the household recycling and household garbage. So hopefully, things go smoothly tomorrow, and I will put out, we'll put out an announcement afterwards to clarify what's happening this coming weekend. We are going to require masks be worn at the transfer station and stress to people, social distancing is still important. Couple of other quick points. Again, these have been covered in announcements for revaluation. That effort continues. The inspectors will not be asking to come into the house. It will be with the homeowner's residence permission and external evaluation only. Another very important thing, because of this event, jointly with Killingworth, we have purchased a service from Everbridge, which the town had through the Chatham Health District years ago. It's an alert notification system known as Everbridge. We're calling it the Hattam-Killingworth Community Alerts. There's a sign up link on the town website for it. You can send alerts, the town alerts on our website. Just go to email with the new system. You can send it to a cell phone. You can get voice recordings. If it's a voice message on your landline phones, you've got a lot more options. So please, take a few minutes to sign up for the new service.
Hey, Bob?
Yes?
Just so you know, that comes up sometimes as potential spam on your phone, so just be aware of that. Because I got the call today about the weather from our service, and all my caller ID said potential spam. I let it go to voicemail and then listened to it. So just, people may want to know that it's, it may or may not show up as coming up from us.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, the last thing I have to say, and again, this has been in some of our announcements. The town has a critical need for poll workers. I'm sure you are aware, the primary was delayed initially to June 2nd and now to sometime in August. Hopefully, by then, the pandemic isn't an issue. But the registrars did do a survey of the existing poll workers. A full 75% said they, excuse me, were not willing to work during the pandemic. I can't blame them. Most of them are in the high-risk group. I've told most of you, or some of you anyway, that I've worked the polls for a couple of years in Hattam Neck, and at 64 years old, I was the kid in the role, and not just by a little. It was great, except they made me keep getting their coffee and snacks, but again, it's an aging population. We need some newer, new and younger poll workers. That's all for my update. Sean, Kate, do you have anything to add?
I was just going to mention the transfer station issue. Thank you for taking care of that, because he reached out to us and asked us about it, but thank you.
You're welcome, Sean.
Hi, this is Kate. Just wanted to mention Economic Development Commission met last week. We voted, we made a pretty tough decision, looking out, as most people know, River Days is an annual event with the fireworks, and Mark Lundgren had also brought forth the idea of doing a community event focused around our lovely mucket. We had a very long discussion, and ultimately, we have decided to postpone both of those events until 2021 for a number of reasons. First and foremost, the budget. You know, it's just with everything that's going on right now, it's hard to be able to commit those funds when they might be needed for a higher priority item. And also, just because there are many factors that go into planning those events that are totally out of our control. You know, something like state permits, you know, even just outside resources. There's no guarantee that we would even get permission in time to be able to hold those events, just knowing what's going on at the state level with, you know, a lot of overworked and understaffed departments. So just please know, it was a very hard decision, but we are definitely looking forward to a bigger and better 2021. Planning efforts are already going to be underway, so if anybody's interested, please reach out. We'll take all the help we can get, and now we have a lot more time to make it even better.
Okay, thank you, Kate. So my, the Selectmen's update's completed. Brenda, can I ask you for the Board of Ed update?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So this is the summary of March 2020 for the Board of Education meetings. The superintendent preliminary budget presentation was the first week of March before schools were closed due to the COVID-19. Superintendent Hagman presented her 2021 budget to the Joint Boards of Education, Selectmen, and Finance Committees. Her budget proposed a gross increase of 2.46%, with the largest increase associated with special education expenses. Other notable changes included adding the high school gym teacher due to the change in state credit requirements, replacing the sunsetting accounting system, and updating the website for ADA compliance. Four middle school teacher positions will be eliminated. After revenue and reimbursements, the proposed final increase to the towns would be 1%. Board of Education budget workshops. In March, the Board of Education had several workshops to focus on each area of the budget. With appreciation for the work of Dr. Hagman put into the budget, the board acknowledged the new realities post-COVID economy and asked the admin team to identify ways to present a gross budget equal to or less than the 2019-2020 gross budget, which had been approved by the community in the last referendum. At the end of March, Superintendent Hagman proposed over $1 million in various cuts for the board's consideration, including reducing purchases in textbooks and class libraries, expecting no or little impact, removing high school, middle school late buses and after-school monitors, sharing kindergarten paraprofessionals between classrooms, and changing capital fund contribution. The board will hold the next board workshop April 14th to continue to the work, excuse me. As far as the COVID-19 effects on RSD 17, distance learning on March 14th, the schools closed. Staff shifted to provide distant learning opportunities for all students. On March 16th, the RSD 17 Food Services staff began providing bag breakfast and lunch needed for children under the age of 18 in Hattam and Killingworth. Additionally, the district's IT department shared lending computers and families, and guiding families who needed internet access. To date, teachers and students have completed two weeks of online learning. Forty families have taken advantage of bag meal programs, and over 200 computers have been handed out to aid our students in their education. With the governor's orders, since closing our schools, Governor Lamont issued several executive orders directing the Board of Education on how to continue running public meetings and passing the 2021 budget. Per the governor's orders, Board of Education meetings are now held video conference, as this one is, which can be watched live or recorded on our website. Statues requiring town meetings and referendums have been suspended, and the budget is to be adopted by the board level. Finally, the board has been granted a 30-day extension to complete the budget. All information, including how to access their meetings, our new budget timeline, and how to participate in public comment can be found on our website. The board is planning a budget vote on June 2nd. As far as capital improvements for the Board of Education, the field house, this project, has been approved by the state and will move forward during school closures. The board, the... DES, Burr Elementary School. The facilities committee recommended, and the board agreed to, an alternative replacement, replacing the damaged carpet at Burr School. While schools were closed, the new carpet tiles were installed with a perma-link covering placed in between the existing and new layers of carpet. This system eliminated the need to re... Yeah, right. Remit a date, whatever that, shortened the time to install and resulted in significant cost savings. On our website is the annual audit report, which was presented to the Board of Education in March and can be found under Business Office. There is a meeting tonight. It's actually going on right now. I had to leave to come here, but there's a meeting at 7 o'clock, and I urge anybody and everybody to go and hear about the latest budget, and your community input is important. You can find the links on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is tax refunds. We have before us a request for two tax refunds, one motor vehicle, one motor vehicle supplement. The total for both of them is $450.26. Can I have a motion to approve the refunds as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on business is the old business. Discuss the charter revision changes. We went through these at the last Board of Selectmen meeting. There was one that we left that we tabled for further discussion. That was section 8.14, subparagraf A. My suggestion, this has to do with hiring and termination authority. My suggestion was that it would be rewarded to read, "The Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for the hiring and termination of all town employees. On a case-by-case basis, the Board of Selectmen may delegate these responsibilities to the first selectmen. The first selectman or designee shall be responsible for the review, evaluation, and discipline of all town employees." We had some discussion on the wording of the first part, the case-by-case basis for hiring and termination, and I will now open it for comments. Any further comments or suggestions on how to revise these wordings? I will say, the current wording in the charter does not comply with the law. This one won't either, because it doesn't agree with what's in the union contract. The union contracts are due for negotiation now, actually. So we can straighten out that word, the contract wording, to make it match whatever we put in here. We just need to know what we would like to see in here.
Just before, I think, you know, it's not bad, but I just worry that, you know, going forward, you know, what the boards make up. There has to be... How are we going to put this? You know, which type of discipline are we going to do? I don't think termination should be part of just one person's decision. That should always go to the board, I would think.
This is Kate. So I want to make sure I understand how this process would work. So when we say on a case-by-case basis, that means it would always come up to the Board of Selectmen, and then the board could vote to decide to delegate solely to the first selectmen as far as the hiring, the firing, and all of that in between. So basically, it would always come to the board level at some point.
Correct, but being such a small board, it lends itself to, you know, you get, you know, someone, there's, "Look, I really want to let this guy go," and another person goes with it. That's, I see that's a problem. I really do. I'm not saying, honestly, not saying this board. I don't foresee it with this board, but on previous boards, I could see that happening, and who knows with future boards? They're becoming a sticky issue.
Okay, Sean, I hear what you're saying, but how does any other wording in there prevent, I mean, under the current wording, if there's going to be a hiring, a termination, and actually, a couple of things in between, the board, the Board of Selectmen has to approve all of those?
Yeah, all right.
So again, if I get my buddy on the board and we agree to terminate somebody, whether he or she deserves it, that can still happen. It's a small board.
Yeah.
With the three of us, but I don't see how we could change wording and prevent that sort of thing from happening.
No, I understand that.
That violation.
Another discussion down the road for probably another board, because I don't think we want to reopen the charter again, but we definitely, we need a bigger board. It just comes down to that. I think I can live with this.
Okay.
I agree, yes. Yes, I think everybody makes very valid points, but as long as it always comes to the board at some point, I think that's an okay change to make.
All right. Can I have a motion to send to the Charter Revision Committee this change, as well as the previous ones we approved? The wording as proposed, section 8.14, subparagraf Alpha A, excuse me. "The Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for the hiring and termination of all town employees on a case-by-case basis. The Board of Selectmen may delegate these responsibilities to the first selectmen. The first selectman or designee shall be responsible for the review, evaluation, and discipline of all town employees."
I'll make that motion to send that proposed language to the Charter Revision Committee.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everybody. All right, next item is new business. First thing on the list is Board of Success, Board of Selectmen succession planning. It's something we neglected to do, but in the Charter, section 6.2, it required us at the first meeting to, among other things, designate who will fill in for the first selectman if he or she is unable to fulfill their duties. Frankly, I didn't even think of it until the pandemic and the realization that that's a very real possibility, actually, at any time. So we need to designate someone to act if I am unable to do so. And with that, I will open it for discussion.
This is Kate. You know, I think Sean and I are both very qualified people, but I would like to recommend that Sean be that designated person. You know, I think with his qualifications and his background, I think he has more of the right kind of experience to handle something like that. So I would like to recommend Sean.
Okay.
Thank you. As you said, both of us can do this job. There's no, there's no question of that whatsoever. And whoever, you know, does this job, I'm sure it'll always work as a board, not in the vacuum.
Okay, thank you, Sean. And can I have a motion that line of succession will be, if I am unable to perform my duties, it would first fall to Sean, and if for any reason he is unable to perform it, it would fall to Kate?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Kate. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Excuse me. All right, the next item up for discussion is one of the executive orders, Executive Order 7S. Laid forward to two tax programs. Municipalities have to elect to participate in one, but they can participate in both if they want. The first one was a tax deferment program. Basically, would delay payment of taxes for up to 90 days without penalty for eligible participants. These are supposed to be people impacted by COVID-19. And if the town elected to establish eligibility requirements, they would have to go through an application process. The second program is a low-interest program, again, for 90 days. Your taxes would be due on one August as of current practice, but for the first 90 days, your interest rate would be reduced from, instead of the 1.5% per month currently set by law, to a quarter of a percent by month. And just for information, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kristi, but that tax rate, that does not compound. So it's just, it adds on every month, but it adds on every month. Recommendations, and Joe, I'll ask you for your input. Are you still on the screen? Yeah, there you are. You're still on the screen. On the two of them, we had a discussion with Barbara Bertrand, our finance director, Joe Santafanti, and myself about these two options. We were concerned that if we do the tax deferment, it's going We were concerned that if we do the tax deferment, it's going to create a tax flow problem for the town and felt that the tab, the low interest program was the best one for us. It also is less cumbersome as far as applications, if we're going to limit it at all. And it just seemed to be a better program. From what I can see, and I've sent out some information on this, surveys from CCM and from the River Cog, towns seem to be split between the two, some of them electing the deferment, some of electing the interest and a few towns going with both. With that, I will open it for Joe. Would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I think you covered most of it. If you if you look at where the split is, it seems like the smaller towns are going with the deferred interest because they don't have a lot of other funds where they might be able to draw cash from if if need be. So looking at East Hampton and Chester and some of the smaller towns outside of Fairfield County, most of them are going with the deferred interest. Fairfield County towns are going for both or they're opening up, but I guess I would agree as far as the administration part of it also, it makes more sense to kind of just have that that applies to everybody, everybody gets that option versus the application process and having to make decisions and then and the administration of that whole process.
All right, Kate, Sean, comments?
Go ahead, Kate.
Oh, thank you. This is Kate. Do we have an idea of the percentage or dollar value of taxes that are paid out of escrow that because I I'm assuming in escrow account, we'd be more likely to be collecting that money versus somebody who's paying it, you know, privately or individually?
Yeah, well, this is Bob, just for clarification, escrow accounts still need to be paid. They are not eligible for the deferment at all. So the the banks, the lending institutions, if they're escrowing your mortgage payments or your property tax on your mortgage payment, they have to pay on time, they don't get the breaks.
I I think the 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 low interest makes makes more sense to me. I think Joe hit it, the the application process on the other one. You're talking about people who who aren't escorted, and so that'd be a lot of people who paid off their homes or whatnot, that, you know, maybe elderly not as savvy on working the computer and doing the the application process as easily. So I think the the deferment, the deferment, excuse me, the 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 low interest makes more sense to me.
And this is Kate, yes, I would agree, you know, the the obvious concern with deferment is, you know, just kicking the can down the road and, you know, who's to say if you can't pay it in a couple of months, you know, will you be able to pay it by the end of the year? So I would agree that the the low interest, I think, is the better way to go for us.
All right, and just a point for everybody, both programs require that at the end of the ninety days, you have to have made the tax payment or all bets are off and the interest goes back to the one and a half percent. You've got to make the payment within those ninety days.
Okay.
All right, can I have a motion then to to adopt the low interest program? And we will so certify to OPM, which we have to do by the twenty-fifth of the end of this week.
I'll make the motion that we go with the with the low interest program.
All right, any discussion on the motion?
Just out of curiosity, do we know what Killingworth decided yet?
Let me take a look at what I've collected. I don't think I do. Joe, have you heard by chance?
I didn't look up Killingworth, I looked up a whole bunch of other towns, but I didn't look. If I can find it quickly, I'll let you know, but.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, I've got nothing on the two surveys that I got.
Okay. I know they had mentioned during our joint meeting last week that their their decision was coming up very soon as well.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to adopt the low interest program. Can I have, is there any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? All right, motion carries. I'll fill out the certification and we'll get it to the State Office OPM as required before the end of this week. All right, the only other item remaining on our agenda to discuss is an executive session. We are going to go into executive session as described on the agenda. When we come out of that executive session, we will reconvene this meeting to to take a vote on any and all motions made at that session or just to announce that none have been made. Unfortunately, for those of you who are with me, I don't have any way of gauging how long that will be or how to notify you we're back. I would suggest you just stay here. I'm actually going to leave this meeting. I'd recommend Kate and Sean do the same, I believe they are. Robbie, I see you're on, I would also leave the meeting. And we have set up a separate go to meeting to conduct that executive session. So if I could, can I get into the motion to adjourn for the executive session?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the executives.
Okay, motion is on the table. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. We'll reconvene as soon as we are done with the executive executive session. All right, everybody, it looks like we are all back from the executive session. Joey, if you'd note the time, at this time, we are reconvening the Board of Selectmen Special Meeting. Based on the executive session, I will put forward a motion that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the first selectman to terminate the employment of Robbie Marshall. This will be delayed until Friday pending to give Robbie an opportunity to submit a letter of resignation if she so wishes. Well, that's the motion I'm putting forward. Any discussion on the motion?
Just the one comment, I'm sure that if Robbie does not submit the letter of resignation, that is worded such that it was not for malfeasance or or any egregious wrongdoing, it was more of technical errors, what we discussed in the in the meeting.
Exactly. It'd be worded, it's all in the lines of a skill mismatch and it just didn't didn't work. And as I said in the meeting, I will also word it that would entertain Robbie applying for other positions in the town, but not the tax clerk. Again, with the labor attorneys concurrent. All right, any other discussion on the motion? All right, with that, I will call a vote on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, the motion is approved unanimously. All right, everyone, that ends our business tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Sean. Kate, you're not fast enough. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I I got pasta sauce to get to.
Yeah, we all have dinner to get to. Thank everyone for attending and for waiting to us to reconvene. Thanks to the Board of Selectmen and we are done for the night. Stay safe, everybody.
Stay well, good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.